People feeding people. It's not government owned. It's not anywhere near ownership of government. You cannot come in and say, "That's mine, and we want to make it our own, and we want to make it our way." Because it's not yours. It's not. The donations are already there. The food's there. All I need is the people, and I'm the first person, so I will step up and I will serve the food. And I will start with my, I'll get a bike, a cart, and I'll go around feeding the less fortunate and the people with, without food. Meaning the people at 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3, 4 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the morning that are out in the streets cold because gateway can't house them, are hungry because they're out there. Well, you don't sleep if you're on the street. Or you do, you try to, and you get cold. If you get cold, then you're basically on the way to getting sick. And if you're sick, you can't do anything. Meaning you're in the hospital or you're in movement. You cannot move. You cannot go out and do the things you need to do to get tasks done. So you don't want to get sick. You want to stay above. You want your immune system to be well. You want to keep moving. You want to keep your clothes dry. You want to change as much as you can. Meaning if you have to steal for clothes, you will. Because that's important. Am I almost running out of time?
You're it. That's it.
That's five minutes?
Six, actually.
Okay, well, I will finish with, that's the first program. The next program would be the garbage program, which I need your help on. The other program, which is an allowance system, which would, the economy would grow immensely. From there, the two programs, I wanted to talk about the taxes. Taxes are more specific and more important than all of what I've said. Because all those receipts we throw out from coffee, chips, pot, meals, movies, everything.
We really appreciate, you know, and it takes a lot of courage to come up to a mic like this.
I'm having an event in Douglas Park in about a month, and I'll probably need your help on it. But I'll get a permit whether I get help or not. And I'll have an event with the community now.
Yeah, it's great to get involved in the community, and you have to, you know, get involved, do it the right way, do it the legal way. You know, and be respectful of the community. And I think that's very important, is you have to have respect, and the respect is, it goes both ways.
And there's some respect not there, meaning it's not earned.
And when you get, you know, some more information, please forward it to, you know, our staff. And maybe there's a way or a conduit down the road that the city can help you in some way.
I'll tell you this, I'm not government friendly, meaning I do not support you guys. I'm sitting in this room right now saying that and meaning it. I'm not behind you. Now, I don't respect what you guys have done over the hundreds and thousands of years. I know this is an ancient thing. This isn't just today, or the last hundred, since 1990, what, eight? Or what was it? It says on the plaque. I know, I've read about your plaque. I know all about the city of Langley. I've researched it. I haven't researched each of you as a people, meaning I would sit down with you and interview and find out who you are, if you had heart, and if you were actually for the people, and if, or if you were for the money. And I could tell right away. I would interview, and I'd find within the first two minutes of knowing you, who you are. And I've done about 70 businesses in Langley, gone around meeting them, and there's a lot of people behind me. So whether it happens or not through your help, I would like your help. And I'd like to bring you on this, but I know that there's a lot of wickedness behind what this is about. Meaning that God is saying something right now to each and every one of you.
No, we appreciate that you've come and done this now, and as it's done, she, your time is up.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys. Sorry for the going overboard. I tried to make it fly.
No, sometimes when one's passionate, you go over a little bit, and then we try to give a little bit too.
I haven't stopped talking about this for months, so.
Thank you very much for coming, and I understand you with a small delegation, so, thank you. Next item we have is under the mayor's report. The next regular council meeting is April the 4th, 2016. That one will be televised. The next meeting after that will be April 25th, and that's, that one isn't televised. So the first item we have is Metro Vancouver, councillor Stortebum.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing really new to report. No meetings since our last council meeting. But there are two Metro Vancouver videos being premiered tomorrow in West Vancouver. They should be online at the Metro Vancouver website soon. One of them is associated with the building of the Twin Tunnels, a 10-year project, one of the largest of its kind in the world, if not the largest. And the second video is a unique opportunity that was made available before the tunnels were flooded with water. And they put an orchestra in there, and they played in that vault. And so those two videos will be coming on stream soon, too. And that's pretty much all I've got to offer for this evening for Metro Vancouver, Mr. Mayor.
That's, oh, sure. Oh, councillor Albrecht.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Metro Vancouver website is advertising the opening of the TIM Centre. So a really nice piece and something that people should check out.
Thank you. Library happenings, councillor Martin.
Thank you. Excuse me. City of Langley Library Happenings, Monday, March the 21st, 2016. The City of Langley Library has long played host to many different kinds of groups wanting to learn more about the library and what we have to offer. Library staff are frequently approached by community groups hoping to have a tour customized to their particular needs and interests. Recently, the library welcomed two very different groups to visit and hear about all the wonderful materials and services we have available. The first group was from Quantlin Polytechnic University's Access Program for People with Disabilities. This group of adults visited the library with their instructors and caregivers. They learned the library can help them improve their computer skills, search for jobs, and find materials to read and watch for fun. The second recent tour was for Sparks Group. The Sparks are girls aged five and six who are associated with the Girl Guides of Canada. The Sparks learned about fun and educational library programs, as well as all the great books available to them here. The girls were excited to know that they can ask for help from library staff to find books especially for their reading case. And that's the Library Happenings. And I'll just mention again, Mr. Mayor, that the Tourism Langley AGM is April the 7th. It's a luncheon at Cascades, if anybody's interested in going to go onto the website and RSVP. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Tourism, okay, Tourism AGM, thank you. Bylaws. Item we have here is a final reading, a final reading of the bylaw cited as the City of Langley Official Community Bylaw, 2005 number 2600, amendment number 7, 2015 number 2953, and I need to move in a second. Councillor Stortebum, seconded by councillor Pecow. All those in favor? No discussions. Fireworks bylaw, final reading of the bylaw cited as the fireworks bylaw 2005 number 2603, amendment number 1, bylaw 2016 number 2981, and I need to move in a second. Councillor Vandenberg, councillor Martin, all those in favor? Against, it's unanimous for. Water shortage response plan, final reading of the bylaw cited as the Water Shortage Response Plan Bylaw number 2005, number 2589, amendment number 2, bylaw 2016, number 2982. Moved by councillor Arnold, seconded by councillor Stortebum. All those in favor? Against, it's unanimous for. You're gonna, get ready for this one, Nathan. Get ready. Final reading of the bylaw cited as the Fee and Charges Bylaw, 2010, number 2837, amendment number 21, bylaw number 2016, number 2983, moved by councillor Pecow, councillor Martin. All those in favor? It's unanimous for. Under the administrative reports, the New Building Canada Fund, the 2016 intake. And Cara, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. As you probably know, the New Build Canada Fund, Small Communities Fund, is having a second intake of funding applications. We were successful in the first intake with receiving funding for our 203 Street Bridge and Roundabout project. So we put on our thinking caps and looked for a project that might be eligible for the second intake. The project in question is 56th Avenue Roadworks and Utilities. It's really a project to renew aging assets such as the sewer and water pipes which were built in the 60s and the road surface which is in poor condition. And as part of those works, we'll propose to upgrade some of the street scape and enhance the street lighting and accessibility.
Thank you. And the motion is that the 56th Avenue Roadworks and Utilities projects be endorsed as the City of Langley's 2016 Building Canada Small Communities Fund application. I need to move in a second. Councillor Vandenberg, councillor Martin, any discussion? Councillor Albrecht.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff and show my appreciation for the being prepared to take advantage of these funding opportunities from both the provincial and federal governments to save our taxpayers' money and with a mind to renewing and replacing and upgrading our infrastructure. Something that is long past due and something that we need to continue to monitor and improve at every opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Pecow?
Just a quick question from that, you've put it under for sewer and water. And is it generally because you're replacing that, that Build Canada Fund would be okay with the, like, ornamental lights and all the other street improvements we're asking for as well?
We've spoken with some of the representatives from the ministry, that's, with the two ministries that are overseeing this intake. And our first project, 203rd Street, was successful under the major roads category, based on the traffic volumes and the works we were proposing. And based on our discussions, those categories for water quality and for reliability of the infrastructure, we felt would most meet the criteria for 56th Avenue.
Thank you. Councillor Stortebum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillor Pecow for that timely question. And I was actually just going to echo what councillor Albrecht said in complimenting staff for having the foresight to prepare these projects in anticipation of tomorrow's federal budget and having shovel-ready programs prepared so that when that budget comes down, we're on the ground running. So thank you again.
Thank you. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Against, it's unanimous for. Contract award T216-01, 2016 Road Rehabilitation Program. And Ms. Jefford, would you care to comment on this at all?
Yes. So we review our road conditions yearly, and we also look at the locations where we've had utility works that need repaving. And attached to this report, there's a map of the paving locations. And we, based on our purchasing policy, we did a public tender on VC bid, and we are recommending award to the low bidder.
Thank you. And the motion is that councillor Ward, the tender T2016-01, 2016 Road Rehabilitation Program to Lafarge Canada Inc., based on their bid of $819,857.75 excluding GST, and that council authorized the Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, and the Corporate Officer to execute the tender document, T2016-01, 2016 Road Rehabilitation Program to Lafarge Canada Inc. I need to move in a second. Councillor Vandenberg, councillor Albrecht, any kind of a discussion? The tenders, Lafarge Canada was low at, as I said, the 800. The high one was at 1,034, and there was three others in between. So call the question. All those in favor? Against, it's unanimous for. And the results of the 2016 by-election, Ms. Machada? And the results of the 2016 by-election, Ms. Machada, would you care to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had 2,076 voters turn out to vote in our recent by-election, which was 11.75 percent, which is actually considered to be really good turnout for a by-election. Our regular election in 2014 was a total of 24.1 percent, so we had almost 50 percent of the voters. So I was very happy with the turnout that we got there. And the successful candidate, as you know, is councillor Pecow, and he received 740 votes, or 35.6 percent of the votes cast. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any.
Thank you. I need a motion that the report from the chief election officer be received for information. Councillor Vandenberg, councillor Martin, is there any kind of questions? Councillor Stortebum?
I guess it's too late to ask for a recount now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's fine. Thank you.
And you can't vote twice. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Yeah. Yeah. I dragged it out for you there. So any new or unfinished business? Seeing none? I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Stortebum, councillor Martin, all those in favor? That's it. Welcome aboard.